Got it.
Okay.
So I can call the meeting to order for Thursday, August 13th at 7:32.
Thirty-one.
Okay, and I'm going to take nominations for the position of Secretary.
I will nominate. Are you want to nominate?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, I will nominate Tiffany Sisna.
So Arthur nominates.
Sorry.
And Katia.
I second.
Second. All those in favor? I oppose. Okay, then we're going to-
Congratulations.
Yes.
Can you take shorthand?
This was a nail biter.
Now, we're going to start the review of the proposed village-wide survey.
Ask Bill to give us a little short tutorial to begin with.
Well, so maybe we should, okay, is it, I mean, we've started this because-
He had a copy of it.
No, but of the history because we think we need a baseline for the residents. And residents during this last election, residents were feeling that they had no voice, and it wasn't really clear what they wanted to voice in. So we're trying, that's what this is, but we, this isn't comprehensive. I mean, we wanted something very simple that was going to be easy to tally but would give us some baselines.
And then, I mean, the theory is that if we want to go into further detail, there could be a follow-up survey so we can build on with the information that we've gathered from the first one. And also, when I was doing this, just the original draft in Survey Monkey, that the trial version only allowed for 10 questions. So that's why the number was 10 and not more. So once we subscribe, we'll be able to do a lot more questions than that.
But the question will be if we want to.
If we want to.
Yeah.
And we also could see, just as a side note, there's a survey function in Constant Contact.
Yeah, so-
I don't know what we're paying for right now, but-
Right, so, I mean-
Options.
This is just the reason why it was 10. And then, from various follow-up conversations that we had, there's two questions that I wrote on this copy that was not on the copy that you got. And that's related to communications. So one just says, "What's the most effective method of communicating with you?" So whether that's-
Do you want to come and sit here at the table so that we don't have to, so Katia doesn't have to turn around and Steve can hear?
And you won't hear me.
Thank you.
So anyway, just on the back here, I just wrote out, again, by hand because I could only do 10 in Survey Monkey.
And those are questions?
Additional questions on communications were, "What is the most effective method of communicating information to you? Select all but apply." So, "Port communications, updates to village website, or village newsletter mailed to your house." And then the second question was, "What kind of information would you like to receive from the village office?"
Is that an open-ended, or is that a-
Well, there's three choices.
Well, what I could come up with, right?
Right.
Notice of upcoming events, notice of issues under consideration by the council, and then other was an open-ended.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming to talk to us.
Well, I think you've got a good survey questionnaire here, and with a, just a little tweaking, it'll be a perfect one.
We love tweaking.
Okay. Let me, let me take about 10 minutes to give you some easy steps for a successful community survey. And I have recently done one with a very unsuccessful question on it, which I will give you as an example of how not to do things in a particular case.
Oh, that's, that's interesting.
You can, if you want. So follow this, follow this through with me. When you do a survey, well, first, let me tell you my own background. I've done surveys for everything from, recently for a family reunion and my high school class, to very large surveys in Guatemala and Malaysia, and I was in charge of all of the nation's surveys at the Census Bureau, which tell us what we are, how we're doing as a people with regard to labor force and unemployment and health and transportation and crime, et cetera, et cetera. So I do know something about surveys. Easy steps for a successful community survey. First, when you do a survey, what do you want? Well, you want to know what some well-defined group of people are doing, thinking, or wanting. When the survey is completed, what do you not want? Well, four things. You don't want lots of people who didn't participate in the survey. You don't want respondent confusion about how to answer any of the questions. You don't want uncertainty about what the answers mean, once you look at it. And finally, you don't want legitimate complaints from people who don't like the results. You may have complaints, but you don't want legitimate complaints. So those are the four things you don't want. Therefore, first, decide whether the well-defined group of people you are interested in is just those households who answered the survey, or everyone in the, what we call, the universe, that is, everyone, every household in VMA. Either way, you want to make efforts to get as many households as you can to participate. But if your well-defined group that you're after is everyone, then you need to be more careful, careful about what you're doing, and the job is harder. That is, on the one hand, you may be satisfied with just the people who answer the questionnaire. And if so, that's relatively easy. But that's not necessarily representative of everybody in your community. If you're interested instead in what everybody in your community thinks, we can talk about that, and that's a tougher job. Because the people who answer a questionnaire are usually not like the people who didn't answer the questionnaire with respect to the things that you're interested in. Unfortunately, that's the way the world is presented.
So do the complainers answer, and the people who have-
That's a good question. That depends, and, but usually, yes. Usually, yes. At least, it's biased in that direction. It's a good question.
Interesting, interesting.
And if, if you're interested in that larger group, there are ways to do that, but it's harder. Then it gets a little more technical, but there, but in either case, you want to, you want to come up with a system which induces, or incentivizes, or threatens as many people, as many households as possible to answer. You can do that by, you know, sending it again a second time, you can do it by emphasizing how important it is, you can do it by emphasizing a prize-
What'd you say?
A prize chosen at random, you know, there's, we can tell lots of ways to do that. So, second bullet, make it easy, so the first one is, you have to decide who you're interested in knowing their opinions. The second bullet, make it easy for people to answer the survey. And I've got seven points there. First, tell them at the top approximately how much time the survey will take. Or they won't start, or they'll quit in the middle if they're disappointed about that. So you need to figure that out, which is not hard. Second, avoid questions that are irrelevant for most respondents. And use, I'm going to give you an example just for fun for each of these. On that one, I got a recent survey from, I'm on the board, was on the board of editors until recently, of Science Magazine. So I got a survey recently from Science Magazine, oh, in which there were all kinds of questions, of things that had no relevance to me at all. I'm not teaching, I'm not a faculty member, you know, all, but there wasn't any branching that kind of took me out of things. So I was sitting there slogging through, and only because it was Science Magazine did I finish the survey. So there was a bunch of stuff- Even Science can turn out a lousy survey. Oh, yeah, well, Science can definitely do that. And there, and there is one thing in here that I'll comment on when we come to your questionnaire about that. Word each question, so its meaning is clear and its ample, its answer is simple. Well, about three weeks ago, I sent out an email questionnaire to the members, people who come to our family reunion in northern Indiana. All of them who are eligible to come, right after the reunion was held. And I asked in it, "Do you want to have next year's reunion in the fireman's hall?" And the problem with that question is, "Or what?" Was the alternative.
Right, right.
Or not have a reunion?
In the middle of my hearing.
Or, "Go choose something else," or the place we had it three years ago? I told all this experience, and yet, here I, here I sent that out. I'm going to tell you how I should have avoided that, and how you can avoid that kind of thing. So it happens to the most experienced of us. Use the same terms, dates, and references from question to question. The application here is, you've got two questions with almost the same date in them. Choose one of them. You've got them in there separately for a particular reason, but they're so close together that you're going to have people, and this is the next one. Make the path from each question to the next question cognitively smooth. No flitting around among topics, you don't do that. No unnecessary jumps between general and specific, you don't do that. One question asking, and then something about the particular thing, because cognitively, people get confused and annoyed about that. And no extraneous stuff inserted between questions. And I have an example of that, that I'll, a suggestion that I'll make. But, okay, but we'll come to the questionnaire. Six, when answer choices are offered, be sure they're mutually exclusive. And I think you're okay on this, such as you would not want to ask, want, have one alternative to a question, trash pickup once a week, and then a couple of things later under the same question. Trash pickup more often than every two weeks. Okay, those are not mutually exclusive. And that's an obvious one, but there are some unobvious ones that you can be sure someone will catch if you don't. And seventh and last, when answer choices are offered, be sure they include all choices that respondents will reasonably choose, and other can take care of that. And after you put other, you can put blank, but only put the blank if you're going to pay attention to it and possibly alter your behavior. Don't ask people things that you're not going to do. So, but other can take care of that. But you want to, you don't want people to look at the alternatives and say, "Well, what I prefer is such and such, and it's not on the list." Then they figure either you are halfwits, don't know how to do a survey, or there's something going on here that they didn't put that on the list. Usually, what they figure is the latter, and that's not good. And then the finally, therefore, and this is very important, and it's kind of fun, try out the questionnaire on a half dozen folks who have not been involved in writing it. Watch while they fill it out, so you can see if any of your questions are unclear or confusing. If there are places where they hesitate, or look back to see what an earlier question asked, or how they answered it, or look forward to see what is coming later, or ask you for clarification, then mark that spot for improvement. You want them to be able, you want to be able, you want them to be able to glide effortlessly straight through the questionnaire. At the end, you may or may not ask them to suggest improvements, depending on whether you intend to take suggestions into account. In this case, I probably wouldn't. You know?
Oh, you mean the test?
If you want more Kent oak trees planted instead, you know, but you could, but don't ask it unless you intend to do something about it. And finally, there are five distinct, five or six distinct phases to a survey. First, decide what to ask, you've done that. Two, decide whom to ask, you've done that. Three, ask them. Four, analyze the answers. And five, inform decision-makers, perin, and the survey respondents about the answers. This is important, very important to do if you're going to ask the survey again next year. You want to get back to them and tell them. And finally, in perin, inform survey respondents about actions taken based on the answers. This is important to do if you want to be re-elected. So, thank you. So that's, those are kind of the general considerations, and I think if we keep this in mind, we'll see that you've got a good questionnaire here. I'm going to pass out now, this looks like a lot of red ink, but in fact, it's pretty simple. My, my suggestions for how you can-
Should we use one copy?
Oh, yeah, should be. Yeah, let me get, let me get a stickler. And I think I, do we need another one?
No. Oh, that's fine.
I've got pieces of another one.
No, it's fine, we're good. She was just going to staple them together.
Oh, I see, okay. Actually, I may have another one if you need to-
No, I don't know whether-
Okay. So I think we can go through this.
Yeah, it's fine.
You have a whole nother one, or?
Oh, I think I do.
You can, she can work off of this one. And do you want one with all the-
There's something missing in this one, but-
Is it that last page right there?
Yeah. It's kind of a upside down.
It got messed, it got printed on the, what do you call it?
With, with that, I think it's complete.
Now, do you have one for yourself?
I do.
Oh, good.
I do.
Here's a stapler for some of the others.
Okay. So let's just look through this. Right up at the top, you'll see an arrow, and that's suggesting that you move the response to this question will be used as a baseline. Move that up to the top. Don't interrupt, don't never interrupt questions.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. The-
Oh, this one right here, responses-
Response to this question will be used as a baseline for future yearly surveys.
Move that to the top. Put that at the top.
Move that up to the top, or you could say responses to some of these questions. But don't interrupt your question flow with stuff like that. You want the questions to go, unless you have to, one after the other, and that doesn't have to be there. So you, you can say it at the top.
That kind of fits in with saying also how long it will take at the top.
Exactly, that's right.
Right, and then maybe also, if, when we're, not if, when we're going to notify the residents of-
Good, that's perfect.
Yeah, so probably the newsletter, or through Constant Contact.
That's really, that's an excellent idea. I should have thought of that, because that's incentive for them to fill it out. Very good.
How we'll distribute responses.
Yeah, and you'll, and you'll figure out how long it's going to take by watching these people take it. And if they have some problem with it, you'll fix the problem and subtract a minute or two. Yeah, okay. Bill, you said at one point, with respect to this one line about a baseline for future surveys, that if we are going to do it again, that the circumstances should be similar, same time of the year, same kind of survey. So it should be comparable. So what are, what are those things to make it comparable? Okay, yeah, I didn't think about that. There are several things. One is that the content that you're particularly interested in comparing from one year to the next, the question must stay the same. This is a big problem in decennial censuses, because you want the, of the US, you want the question, you want the question to stay the same, so you compare how many, what proportion of the population are married in nineteen, in 2010 with 2020. But the definition of marriage is changing between 2010. So what's the Census Bureau going to do? That's a tough problem. You don't have that problem here. But you, to the extent, and they won't be able to use the same definition. So technically, what you do then is you have so-called bridge. You do surveys, and you interpolate, and make mathematical models and all that. But the first principle is, keep the questions the same that you're interested in. The second is, do the survey in a, in a very similar circumstance, the same part of the year. If there was a, something extraordinary that happened one year, then take account of that. You don't want to necessarily, you can't have act, dictate acts of God the next year and have beautiful weather and all of that. But as much as possible, make the circumstances- What about times of the year that, that are better than other times? Well, the time, if you're going to do this anytime soon, it's not a good time of the year, because a lot of your people are off somewhere else.
We could do it first week, September.
Or even in October. I mean, there isn't letting a little more time go, I think. Are you willing to do that? Is that too long?
No.
I think it's too long.
If we leave it open, it depends on how long we leave, because if we wait till mid-October, or sometime in October, then we don't get results until, if we leave it open for a month.
Right.
At the start of most people's new year, which is September, that's when school's starting, people are back from vacation.
Right, and then it's open for two weeks, and then we have port back in October.
In October. But I want to wait till after Labor Day, because otherwise, if it goes out before, people will lose it.
Right, and I think that's why we wanted to meet in August, so we can actually make changes, and then it will be ready by September.
Yeah, that's right.
And two weeks to complete?
Two weeks is, you don't want it to be too short, but you also don't want it to be too long.
Is 10 days better?
Two weeks, two weeks sounds good to me. And this is just a, you know, feel.
Because if people are vacation for a week, or a couple of bad weeks.
And you're, and you're probably going to want to follow, you're going to do this by, by email. Well, that, that's a question about the universe that we're, or the sample that we're going to after. Do we know what percentage are on email?
More than 300 of the 322.
Very high.
It is very high.
But do you, is that in some, are you counting two residents in a house? Is that more than 300? Is that a lot of houses have emails?
We don't know. We don't know.
We have now married them up-
We do.
House and email, yes.
How'd you do that? Who did that?
Tiffany, of course.
His wife spent 10 hours.
Well, this is something I didn't emphasize, because Arthur told me that you were probably interested in, in one response per household. But this well-defined group up there at the top means, you know, that if it's something different from that, you really have to think about it. Even with one per household, you know, you're leaving it up to them who answers it in the household. And that's okay, generally.
Right.
Well, they probably know who the person is.
If you were interested in every adult separately, or if you were interested in people who live here year-round, or you're interested in excluding renters, or, you know, there's all kinds of things. If you're interested in-
I mean, we can do that, like, we, we have a better sense of, with every household, if there are two adult emails in that household, we can say all of that, we know that.
But what do you want to do in that case? Yeah, do we want to say one, one, you know, resident of two people? And that's a question I can't answer. That's a question.
I think it also has to do with what can we-
Control.
What can the technology show us?
Yeah.
Because we, we want to get resident feedback, but we also don't, we don't know that much about, you know, if someone forwards this to a friend who lives across the way, not in the Village of Mars edition, you know, that's not necessarily feedback we want.
I, I would say mainly, you just want to decide what you want and tell them what you want. I think that's the principle. I'm not sure you really need to control that very much. I mean, there might be a few people who do something like that. We can't control it, but we can just say it.
Well, but if we say you have to enter your street address-
Well, we'll come to, we'll come to that at the end, whether you want this to be anonymous or not.
Right, because that's the only thing, way I could think of making sure that we don't have 15 entries for one house.
Well, why would you do that? I mean, if this, if they were entering, you know, a lottery to get a million dollars, people might cheat, but why would people take the, you really think people might take the effort to have three or four people in the household? They could. All right. Well, they could, but, I mean, so if a handful does it-
And also, we have such a small village, that if someone did say enter 15, it could-
You think they could distort it?
It really distorts it, I mean, think about percentages.
Okay, well, if you really, if you need to control that, the downside of controlling that is that you do-
Losing.
You, you do ask people to identify who they are, and in Survey Monkey, you know, you can do it completely anonymously. We're only, Survey Monkey knows who- So when you do, when people do identify themselves, what, what are the effects of that? It reduces participation, always reduces participation.
By how much?
Rather than by how much, the relevant question is for whom? What kinds of people will it matter?
But I think by how much is a relevant question, too, because if it's a small percentage, then the payoff of knowing that we have one response per house could be worth it. But if it's a huge percentage, it may not be.
The problem is that people, people who have something to say that they think is notable, and/or that they think will displease somebody else, or make them look bad- Will be more unlikely. Are definitely less likely to answer a survey. So this is, you know, well-known, and it could be substantial. So it's less the number of people than it is who. And so-
If you, in fact, screen out a whole bunch of complainers.
Because they have to say who they are.
Yeah. So we don't get that insight at all.
Right, yeah, I mean, so, you know, you, Richard?
Yes.
Richard, you raised earlier the point of, well, is it people who are dissatisfied, who respond? And my answer was, yeah, generally, in this kind of thing, but now here's a countervailing thing, that if you ask people's names, then those same people are less likely. But they, these things, you don't want to, but these things don't, they don't balance out, and it's not like you get more or less. I would just, well, we can talk about this later, but I don't, I'm wondering how many, you know, how, if we say at the top, we're interested in one per household, I don't think there's going to be a lot of ballot stuffing. A lot of what? Ballot stuffing to, to try to influence a result one way or another.
But that could be a valid complaint.
Yeah, yeah, afterwards.
You said that, and you want to avoid that.
You said we could put several notes at the top, so if we put a note in that said, I mean, do you, do people generally, can you even tell the survey, do people follow the honor system? If you say, "Look, we're trying to get one per household, you know, please, collect yourselves and do it together."
I don't know, I, you know, I know the two communities I lived in, and actually, I did help with the survey on one of them once. But I, you know, it doesn't strike me that that's going to be a big problem, is-
And I think if it is-
Excess participation.
We'll know it.
Problem, the problem will be the other way, is not enough, not enough households.
Well, what I think we're going to find is, if there is a whole lot of people who, who, you know, keep resubmitting it, stuff the box, that we'll be able to tell that.
You may be able to tell that. But let me give you another reason why you, why you may want the identification information. And that is, you'd like to know if a particular street, or section of a street, or quality of housing unit, or something like that, is badly underrepresented. And you're never going to know that unless you do.
So maybe you would just say, "Which street do you live on?"
You could say, "Which street?"
Then you don't have to identify yourself by the house.
Or even, you could even say which, you know, if you're, you know, if you've got the 3900 block, the 4000 block, if you've got that.
Right, right, not like that.
You could do that, and that would, and then you, you'll be able to-
And then the stuffing, you would know, like, if it's in, like, a certain block is-
Excellent, gotcha. That's a very good point. Very good point. I like that.
So that we just say, "Please identify the street you live on."
Or the block you live on.
And the block, 3900 block.
We don't have that many blocks.
Are there any streets with one person?
No, but there's, there's, I mean, even just listing the street-
On the other side of some.
Because there's hardly any of them that have more than a block.
No, I think that sounds very good.
3200 block.
So we would group it with another block.
And you could group them, yeah, take a look at your map. Or you guys have the map on your head.
Right, so we just say, "Any household over the place."
Okay. By houses. Oh, yeah, right.
Okay. So this is sounding- So that's a way to get at the-
Yeah, yeah, this is sounding pretty good. You don't, you don't want to ask more identifying information about people than you really need. That's just a basic rule. And when you're doing a, so, official surveys, you know, to find out the unemployment rate or something, you know, you really do need to know.
Right.
But, but the Census Bureau has constitutional protection, and nobody can get those data, so every, and everybody trusts it so far, and, because nobody's been able to identify anybody. Okay, let's move on here.
I'm sorry, can I just interject really quickly, because I had a comment on here that was added afterwards, and that was some of the feedback.
Which question is this?
Number one and number, um, number one, okay. So overall, how satisfied, how satisfied are you with the village operations? If someone selects somewhat dissatisfied or extremely dissatisfied, should we route them to say, "If you'd like, please share your experience"?
You can just, I think what you've got there is fine. The addition? Yeah, "Please describe your experience" right below it, that's fine.
Right, so like, Survey Monkey, actually, you can actually direct it to another-
It's like a question 1A.
That would not pop up, if you're satisfied, fine.
Yeah, you can call it 1A, and that way Survey Monkey will treat it separately. You could do that. You, yeah.
Right, so it would not be a required answer, so if people don't want to identify themselves.
That's right. And you don't need to have a formal branching, you could just put it right there.
Okay, okay, good.
Richard, you were saying?
I don't, I didn't under, so if we're extremely, or somewhat dissatisfied, there's going to be a blank to identify, or?
No, no, so what is she, on her additional here- If you are- She's asking.
Oh, I'm looking at the-
If you are somewhat, or extremely-
I see where you're going, okay.
Dissatisfied, uh, please describe your-
That's a really good-
Yeah, please explain.
That's good, and they can leave a blank if they want to.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, that's good.
So have we gotten past question two, or can I?
Okay, now going, he's going down his, where, where are we?
We're at question two.
Okay, well, and two is fine, the, the answer codes are fine.
Okay, so then, same thing here, um-
For three?
Oh, you have got this, this issue about June 25th in one place and July-
Yeah, but that makes sense, I mean, we can easily fix that to July 1st, right?
Yeah, July 1st is the best. Yeah, but just because, it means that people are used to 25th.
Right, what happened on the 25th?
Well, it says, but still.
We're all aware.
Do, should we put in the day our new manager started? I wouldn't. I would just leave that a-
No, because if we change it to July 1st, it's not applicable.
So we'll just simplify the whole.
Right.
Okay, so for question two and three, the note that I have in here, should the, should responses to this question be redirected to be quantified? So if you never heard back, and you called once, that's different from you never heard back and you called 12 times.
Are you on three now?
Two and three, I mean.
Oh, two and three. And you want to do what, quantify it more?
Should responses to this question, if they're not an A, right?
Yeah.
Be redirected, so to be 2A, 2B, or 3A, to be quantified, so?
No, I mean, unless you really need more detailed info, are you talking about getting more detailed information than within one week? Is that what you mean?
No, I'm just, um-
She's saying, you know, say somebody called once, and they-
In a year.
In a year, and they didn't get a call back.
In a year, over the last year. They've only called one person, and one time.
And one person called four times in the past week.
Yeah.
You know, she's, she's asking, do we give them the opportunity to explain, you know, if they say, "Oh, contacted back in the same day," or "Contacted back, never received a response," but they choose to explain, you know, "Because my answer was, my question was answered in the newsletter," or something like that.
You can do that, only do it if you're, you know, really interested in the answer, because that slows people down, and-
Is that where you're getting at?
Yes, that was, yes, thank you.
The, the first one, it's very clear, somewhat dissatisfied, extremely dissatisfied, tell us why. This one is, is more, it's muddier, murkier. The, the first one, it's very clear, somewhat dissatisfied, extremely dissatisfied, tell us why. This one is, is more, it's much muddier, murkier, um, yeah. I would not do that.
What if you change the answer to that to, you know, if you've contacted, how satisfied were you with how quickly the office staff called? Rather than trying to, or office staff response? And use the extremely satisfied, somewhat satisfied.
Yeah, that would make a.
I, I, no, I think this is better because.
You want to know how fast.
Well, it's not that you want to know, it's that you're giving the respondent something specific
Yeah.
Okay.
that to put down, and they don't have to think, well, you know, it was two weeks, but on the other hand, you know, it was really helpful when they did, when she did call back. And then you know, and then you're back in this problem that you don't know what you're getting.
Right, okay.
At the end. You don't know what to make of it, but you do know what to make of this. It doesn't answer everything. I mean, it doesn't say, okay, within three business days, but she cursed at me.
But that will hopefully feed into how satisfied are you with village operations.
No, I think between one, two, and three, you're doing very well there.
Wait a minute, so you have a thing here, oh, format this so that it appears.
Oh, that, that just means that on the screen, have each question appear in its own page.
Yes, when I copied and pasted.
Oh, sure, I know, just a point. If it's a screen, which won't be the same as a page, you know, make sure on the screen, each question is.
Is a full one.
Each question should not have its own page, hopefully, because that makes it look long.
Right, right.
But each one should be, and maybe that'll be necessary on one or two of these, but each one should be on the same screen.
Most of the surveys I've done recently were, you know, they clicked to the next page as soon as you filled in. It doesn't automatically for you.
That's okay. That's, that's all right.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't have enough questions that, that's a, that's a problem.
Okay.
Okay, in, in four, I don't know what move in, move out, no parking signs means, but it just, if everybody else does, that's fine.
So, on this one, I made comments to that, I thought, oh, actually, I forgot to write in a second. I thought that move in, move out, no parking signs was too minor compared to the rest of them, and so we should probably take that out.
When you first read it, you were telling me, that's what Bill's reaction was to compare to the other things.
Right, and that's one thing. And then the second thing was that.
You're going to take that out?
Yeah, just the last one I thought was too minor. And then, from our discussion originally, when we first looked at this draft, Arthur brought up a good point of how do you split up between what you're asking or asking here and what you're not asking there? So, how do you define what's too small, what's too big?
Yes, yes.
And the distinction was standard county services versus not standard county services. So, I added a sentence in this copy that says.
Okay, okay, good.
Services listed below are an expansion of standard county services. I don't know if that's expansionism, no?
That's not.
Which question are you talking about?
Four. So, services listed below.
Here, here's a new one.
Are parallel to or?
In addition to.
Are in addition to.
No, but they're not in addition. The services listed below are what are standard county services.
But we provide, but we provide more than. Provide more than.
Ah, okay.
So, however, that sentence should be structured.
Yeah, we'll have to rewrite that.
Oh, I see an expansion. I see what you're saying. This is in addition.
Right, this is.
Blame it on the Russian. Blame it on the Russian.
That's right.
Okay. Well, if you think that helps people understand it, then that's good.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you think that also addresses the issue that was raised, like, why did you pick these things? If you were an outside reader?
Yes, yes, it could. As opposed to that, this is an awful lot of text to introduce a question. So, you're always, you know, balancing, and that's one reason you test it on a half a dozen people.
Right.
As you, you know, they're reading through that and.
Yeah, like, here's the thing, like, the sentence isn't related to the question, we would like to ensure residents get the best possible balance of services. That's not, that's not a questionnaire.
Actually, I thought I cut that out somewhere.
You cut it out, maybe in the other draft.
Uh, I, I don't like that either. Of course you want that. Yeah, oh, yeah, I did.
The number five you changed.
Doesn't appear anymore, doesn't it?
No, maybe.
No, but in number five, please indicate any changes to services or additionally, you took out changes.
But number four, I would drop, we would like to ensure that the residents get. Of course you want to ensure that. I don't think that's necessary. And I don't think that would be.
I don't have a number four, I don't think.
On the back. Oh, yours is number two.
But I, I don't think that's necessary.
I feel like I have.
Services listed below are expansion of standard, if they are. Which services would you like?
No, 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 I don't have his number, his comments on number four. I don't have Bill's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Comments on number four.
Well, stop mixing vehicles up there.
I know.
We've gotten through my comments. The only comment I had was, keep it on the same page, and everybody knows what move in, move out means. That's all I had.
Okay, so we took that out, okay.
Okay, so we're saying that a good idea would be to remove.
That one sentence.
Yeah, that sentence.
Services listed.
That doesn't help.
Residents get the best possible balance of services.
Slows the mind down, that's all.
How do you, um, you know, the information that we're looking for dictates whether we say rank these things unless it's important to you or it's a yes, no question. What do you see as the balance in a survey between those, or does it matter? You have to just use the tool to get to which one?
You want it to be as easy as possible. If all you need is yes, no, ask yes, no. And if that's all you need, and if it's unambiguous in the respondent's mind what yes, no means, as opposed to, well, but in the winter, I want some. So, if those two things are satisfied, then yes, no is what you want. I, I didn't see a problem with that.
Okay, all right, good.
I don't see the need to put services listed below our standard county services. You know, even if we redo that, I just think that most of the village budget is spent on our residents with, providing our residents with service of, maybe you can even just say, of the services listed below, which would you like the?
Well, this came up before, because there's a lot of other services.
Right, no, I understand. Well, that qualifies by saying of the ones listed below.
But maybe, well, no one's going to get rid of trash service.
Why the? Why do we select the? See, that was originally.
Remember the ten-page document that Tori sent saying that this is all we do? Well, we don't want that, because it's just too long.
So, could we just say, village budget is spending on providing our residents with services, some of which may be above and beyond what the county provides? Or some of which, like those.
But all of these are.
Somehow figure that, right, but that's what I'm saying, like, it gets, it says, most of our budget's providing services. The ones below are above and beyond. I guess you get back in the second sentence.
If they are, if they all are, then you can say that, and that does help reduce ambiguity, I think, if they all are.
They all are.
Right, right. No, I like that, if that, if that's.
You figure out how to shorten it.
Yeah, a better qualifier that lets me know why I'm just rating these.
Right, yes.
And you're not going to lose trash pickup.
No, that's why you have to, drafting is hard.
Speaking of trash pickup, in number five, you have one bad thing in a list of good things. That's going to cause cognitive problems for people. Looking through it, all right, but it'll slow them down.
Okay, we did that one.
So, the trash pickup, once a week at the curb, reduction of current services. Nothing wrong with asking that, but you don't want to ask it in the same list with good stuff.
So, but should we take, do we, does that mean we just take it out?
Uh, yeah, or.
No, I mean, take out the, the parentheticals for each one.
No, no, that, that's even worse, because then they're, this one looks different from the others. Why is it different? And they're, they're starting to think about things that you don't.
Right, and I don't think, one of the things I, that I, reasons I don't like that one is I don't know why I would ever check that, unless you put in there saving, you know, five thousand dollars a year. I mean, there isn't any re, let me see, I get to now carry my trash out twice a week, oh, I mean, once a week, instead of having it picked up twice a week. Why would I want to do that?
But I mean, then you could say the same thing for all of these.
No, because these are all additional.
No, the others are all additions.
But then we'd have to say how much they would cost.
Yeah, well, you know, we'll wonder about that, but I didn't bring it up, but that's getting.
So, it would be cheap.
But you, you probably don't want to do that. That's getting very complicated. If you put all lead vacuuming.
Everybody has their own opinion.
From the street.
Say that again? Sorry, we were.
I'm sorry, I don't even want you to do that.
No, no, that's okay. You, what was the conversation you guys were having? It came up during the election.
So, I've heard, you know, I'm not saying I heard this a lot. I heard this like twice when I talked to all the residents. A couple of residents did want to cut that service so that we're going back to what the county provides, because it would save the village money.
Okay.
Except the village is, I mean, sitting on a stack of money. I mean, it.
I'm simply telling you what I heard. I mean, no judgment, I was not one of those two people.
Right.
Um, and.
Tell them.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what to do about that.
So, what Bill and I were talking about was, you know, your reduction of current service, Richard says, well, you'd have to say that there's a savings that goes with that. And I said, well, then the, the, the opposite is also true. I don't know what I'm trying to say.
It's no shovel for the.
Anytime you say additional service, we would need to say, we would have to quantify how much additional money that would cost.
I, I'm not, I'd have to think about this. I'm not, I'm not sure what to do about that, but it, it doesn't fit in that list.
Okay, so maybe there's a.
Just take out trash.
Well, no, I, I could think of two separate questions. One is addition of services, the other is reduction of services. As two separate, two separate questions.
Do that, if you have more than one.
If you have more than one, what else are we doing that we could reduce?
We could eliminate.
Council meets.
No, we could eliminate extra police patrols.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Reduce police patrols.
All right, no, that's a good solution, Arthur.
What about a question that we're going to be talking about in coming days, having another person in the office, reducing office staff?
Well, I think that's not, that's a management decision.
Yeah, because I don't think that residents would have enough information necessarily to make that.
That one.
You're introducing something entirely different into their brains at this point.
So, do we ever.
It's possible we would ask residents, but we would need to send out more information, and then it would be a separate.
Right, yeah.
So, what, you know, if we figure out how to make ten questions whenever, or if we pay for more, separating them so that there would be an additional services question and a reduction of services question.
That's actually a good idea, because you've probably got some people who think, what's all this additional services?
In fact, some of it could be in the same, some could be in the, some of the same items could apply in both, appear in both.
Now, that's a very good idea, very good idea. And the general principle of that comes up a little later or something.
We don't ask about the newsletter at all, do we?
No.
I think there's something in the additional.
Well, one of the extra questions says, how would you like to receive information? And a newsletter is one of those options.
Wait, before, before we lose that, do we need to quantify when we say reduction or addition?
Not at this.
No, you don't.
I mean, I think of further considerations.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
That would come up.
Should we put that in a, you know, in a header of the comment or just?
No, I think that's unambiguous. I mean, you may find when you try it on these six people, that three of them say, well, by how much? In which case, you've got to think about that, because you don't want half of your entire respondents thinking to themselves how much, but it looks okay to me.
I mean, sure, I'd like all the new services in the world, however you start telling me how much they cost, and I might say.
But I, I was thinking that if we get a high enough interest in one or more, three of these items, then we could follow up and quantify.
That's good.
Okay.
Yep, that's good. Okay, let's go to seven.
Seven.
Seven is fine. I would consider adding an additional question, and this, this gets at this point of people wanting less of something, that this, an additional question with something, something like, I believe the village's building codes and their enforcement have been excessive. Yes, no. Because this entire question here.
This is Richard's baby.
Is assuming that, I mean, effectiveness is one thing, maintaining, but people may think, oh, you're cutting down too many trees, or you're, have too many restrictions on fences.
So, I think that's a different, we have to go back to, what's the goal of the question? If, if the question is about the building code's impact on how things look, that's one thing. If the question is, are the building codes not saving trees, that's another one.
Well, the authentic character.
Right.
Preserving of the character.
I mean, in Terry Chase View, we've got somebody actually hired right now to try to help us figure out what is meant by the character of the town. What is it that we're trying to maintain?
It's very scary. I would, but my whole problem with that right now is that's a sensitive area, I think, because we've heard a lot of complaining about unequal reinforcement.
I see.
And I.
You haven't?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, because of, it's, I mean, that was, and I think we could open that can of worms, and I would just as soon wait for, I think we could ask that in a year from now.
You're saying ask the yes, no question in a year from now?
There will be probably some people who will think, uh, it may or may not have been effective, but it's too much. But you can just let them go if you want to.
So, you're saying.
Those people could just put a.
In order for us to have the baseline, though, we have to keep the same question. So, this year, we could just do the question as written. Next year, we could add the yes, no.
Yeah, but if you add the one next year, then the existing question is no longer comparable, because that's going to change the answers to it.
Right.
Questions, the answers to questions are, are strongly changed by the, by the questions around them. And they don't even have to be around them. In fact, there could be questions later in a survey, this has been tested, later in a survey, that how it's, how the question is answered, later in the survey, changes the answer. These people are getting to that and saying, huh, I haven't thought about that. So, if you want to do that, these two are so highly related.
I think it makes sense to add it. I mean, are we afraid that people are going to say that, no, I don't want any building codes?
Well, but I think excessive.
Exactly, it may not be the long.
Is not the right word. I mean, their enforcement has been, you know, effective.
No effective is the thing you're already asking.
Yeah.
So.
But the first one is effective in maintaining aesthetic character. Well, if we don't change what is effective in the second one, then it's.
But you can, you can make that less aggressive, that wording.
Yeah, I think.
Excessive is.
What have you been hearing? That some people are, they're, they've been more rigorous with the standard.
Well, we're dealing with the one right now, I think, with this whole thing with Ed Novak and that.
Oh.
Oh, Ed. No, I.
But is, is a prime example of where, you know, nine-tenths of that problem is that there were things not on the plans added, and Gene and Wayne both knew it, and now we've got a serious issue in how it's going to be enforced, is one example.
Well, whoever thinks that, this question will probably get, get at that. Whoever thinks that will probably put disagree or strongly disagree. Either the way the question's worded, I think it's asking, effective in maintaining, this is exactly the point where somebody who thinks like that will say, no, it hasn't been effective, it's been biased, or it's been such and such.
Well, yeah, the really thing.
Maybe we need to add that follow-up question saying, if you answer disagree or strongly disagree.
Well, but I think, yes, it could be effective in maintaining aesthetic character, but no code enforcement has not been done.
Yeah, but the word would, fairly, and that would.
Well, then add, has been fair and effective into the question, unless you're interested in them separately, and I don't think you are. Just add the word.
Richard, what are your thoughts? Fair and effective, is that what you?
And then the, if you, if you do add the second question, which I think you should, but if you don't, that's okay. I would play around with the wording. It sounds pretty, you know, excessive, this kind of.
And do you think it's a good conscious suggestion of putting in the comment box if they want to explain more, or is that opening?
Yeah, I'd sure like to know if people, if they say, you know, no, I don't believe, that it would give them a box to, you know, define.
I'm a little confused, right? So, the original question talks about specifically aesthetic character.
Right. The question two is a wholly new question.
No, he was suggesting combining them to be fair and effective.
No, no, I wasn't really. I was suggesting another question.
Right, so then the second question says, are we implementing this code fairly and effectively?
Right.
Well, that's right now the first question, right? That's the existing question, I'm just adding fairly to it.
No, I thought the first question is maintaining aesthetic character.
Yeah, right. I believe the village's building codes and their enforcement have been fair and effective in maintaining.
Aesthetic character.
Yeah.
Which would be different from the enforcement question. I believe enforcement of the building codes has been done.
Yeah, that, that I think is a follow-up question. It gives them a chance, you know, one of, kind of a benefit question and one's a cost question, basically. Not in terms of money, but in terms of how people think about it.
If you took enforcement out of the first question and just said, I believe the village building codes have been effective in maintaining the aesthetic character, and then the second question would be, I believe the building codes, the enforcement of the building codes has been fair and effective.
Actually, that's okay. That makes it positive. I think that's quite good, actually.
And take out that enforcement in the first one. And take out that enforcement in the first one, so that they don't look like the same question.
I think that's very good.
I think we need to type it up and then read it to see if.
Yeah.
If the intent is there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's exactly the kind of thing you want to watch somebody when they're answering it.
Right.
To see if, if those two things are really separate in their heads, they are to us.
It needs to be clear that they're separate.
Yeah, and I think taking out the enforcement and only putting it in one question will help differentiate the questions.
I think that's a very good idea, I like that.
Okay, it's my thought. Eight.
And we also need to talk through additional implications of those.
Number eight, or maybe it's now number nine or whatever, but anyway, number eight. Enter the area of expertise below, this gets back to the.
Personal identification.
Identification of people, and if you aren't going to identify them, um, you could put either, you, you might put, please either enter your area of expertise below, or send an email to such and such, and that allow, the second allows them to separate their interest from what they say on the questionnaire, and so they, they're not identified.
Say it again.
So say, say you don't want to, you want to volunteer for the village, provide your services, but you don't want the council or the village manager to know what your opinion is on, that you're one of those people who does not want trash picked up twice. You want to hold it up once a week.
And they're safe already because they're only having to put down their block, but now you're saying, who are you?
Yeah.
And.
That could be done, that could be done, you know, several other ways rather than on a questionnaire.
Yeah, but you could, you could say, please indicate here or email such and such with your interest.
Mm-hmm.
Either, you could give them a choice, and I would give them a choice, because if you say, please email, that's another step people have to do.
It'd be good to set up an email address that is VMA council, and then everybody would get a copy, so you don't have to actually type in four email address, five email addresses when we apply.
I didn't follow what you just said.
We're saying, uh, set up an email that's a, like the VMA listserv.
Right.
So just email VMA council and it goes to all of us.
Right.
Doesn't go to everybody, it just goes to all of the council.
Just council. So that way, if you're interested, you send an email to VMA council.
Oh, I see, oh, I see what you're, okay.
Actually, we should do that in general.
We should.
That's a really good idea.
But I would give them a choice, because if their, if their only choice is to do a separate act after they finish this.
They might not do it.
No, I agree, you could submit it through here, or.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm, I'm sorry, it was a separate thought that.
That's fine.
I think that's good, I like that.
Katch is signing off, I forget.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do that. But you are signing up, or someone else, not the, not native speaker is signing up for wordsmithing this clearly.
Okay. And I think that's.
Okay.
I make a comment about if you're going to do it now and everybody's gone, that's a problem.
Yeah.
Uh, what did I say?
Do you like the general number nine? Do you have anything else you just want to share? I mean, they could do it anonymously.
Um, yeah, no, that's fine, sure, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the two additional questions.
What are they again?
They're on here, this copy right here.
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry.
On the very back.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say push communications, because I think that there's like two of you who understand what that means.
Yeah, yeah, no, I wouldn't either.
And I am not one of the two, and I saw you smirking there.
But Arthur did, Richard.
It's not something that comes up in my everyday conversation.
Okay, so let's say email communications.
Yeah.
Well, even the, well, email communications by constant contact, I like.
So replace push with email.
Right.
Okay.
Well, do we even have to identify by constantly? That's like bringing the brand there, village from the village.
Well, okay, I think we do.
What?
Right, I think it's important to say constant contact because the, the listserv is not an official source of information.
Right, no, from the, but, from the village.
Village off, or from the village website.
Or, or the, no, village emails.
Village emails. Because people don't know what constant contact is.
Yeah, right.
Do you know what it is?
Oh, I do, but.
You, people don't.
So we need to figure out.
I would agree that most people don't.
Emails and by the village.
Well, unless everybody knows what that is, you either have to drop it or explain it, and you don't want to explain it.
Yeah, email from the village, or village original emails, or.
But both of those are not.
If we, in the future, replace it.
Both of those look fine to me, eleven and twelve.
Well, but then it's a question of how do you differentiate updates via the village website or the newsletter?
It's not push, you have to actually go to the website to see the.
Oh, so that, these come up automatically, and that's the word push.
So what's effective way of communicating information to you, so like all the, email communication, the other one would just be the village website, not necessarily updates, right? Just the village website.
Okay.
Yeah, just the village website.
Now, village newsletter delivered to your home in hard copy, that's what you're saying.
Delivered to your home is.
Hard copy, well, it isn't necessary.
Delivered to my home and my email box, too.
Well, that means delivered to your phone more than your home, because.
I still have a desktop.
I know.
I do, I do, too.
You still have what?
I still have a desktop.
The village, delivered to your home, maybe you have to give them the option, by.
By mail.
By email or by hard copy.
Yeah, by mail, by email.
Can you do that?
US mail, sure.
It's fine.
Yeah.
You don't want to differentiate that.
No, that's fine, US mail.
Again, two, two criteria, one, will they understand what that means, and will you be able to use it when you get it? So if those two.
If they give us information.
If those two are.
I see what this, this push communication means, that we send it out and that you get it, it isn't like it's.
We push it to you.
We push it to you, and it's an automatic.
And you're not going to reply back to it.
It's just an announcement that everybody gets.
So that's why I thought that on the agenda, it would be helpful to have a push communication with the agenda, so you don't have to click somewhere else to find it.
And that's what we did, she sent it out by push the other day.
Yeah, she sent the link to it.
Mine came through with a push.
It was a push email with a link to the agenda, as opposed to a push email with the agenda.
With the agenda, yeah, click here.
I'm going to just say yes, but what the hell?
Click here for the agenda.
Let me mention a couple of.
I think I want alcohol.
Thank you, sorry, I ordered.
On the, uh, the page that starts out, building regulations, um, the additional questions.
Which, the additional questions change?
Starts out, regulation. Of course, all of that at the top is explaining it to the reader here, but you don't want all of that.
No.
You're going back.
Okay, so this is where, um, just, I don't know how much Arthur was able to tell you, so Tori is our new, um, assistant, village manager.
Mm-hmm.
Not assistant manager, new manager, and, you know, she, if she was here, she would say, like, a lot of her questions are, you know, much more specific.
Yes, yes.
They would be kind of service oriented.
Yes, and they look okay, it's just a question of how much do you really want to know, and you're increasing the amount of time that it takes.
Right.
And, and go back to the criterion, that avoid questions that are irrelevant for most respondents, so don't have things on here that maybe 10 people have ever used, unless you want to know that only 10 people have used it, and you're not going to, because not everybody's going to.
Right.
That's going to be too level, too low a level of response to a question for you to make sense of unless you're sure you have a random sample, which you will not have. But at the top of that page, do you feel, do you feel, do you feel? I would consider think instead of feel, um, people, when you ask how somebody feels about something in a questionnaire, it elicits a deeper level of thought and ambiguity and.
Okay, I, well, I hope somebody knows where he's talking about.
This is Tori's.
Okay.
This is Tori's question.
That we are probably not going to use anyway.
Okay, got it. Okay, I'm not going to worry about it.
And.
Yeah, yeah, I have something.
And then if you use, if you use them down near the bottom.
These are two examples.
Yeah, under village newsletter and village council meetings, if you're going to use these, don't mix yes, this gets back to, don't mix yes, no questions in the middle of category questions, so under village newsletter, the first thing is do you read it? Instead, you would, uh, and then would you be satisfied, which is a yes, no, you would move on up under do you read it, which is a yes, no, and that would be followed by how frequently, do you think it covers? So you can have them in the, you shouldn't, but you can have them, and if you have, if you have answers in the same question, that some are yes, no in some categories, you shouldn't, but if you do, bunch them together, so don't have them going back and forth between yes, no, and then the.
But I think right now, the only newsletter questions we're looking at are eleven and twelve, right?
He's tipping us off for our later surveys.
Uh, okay.
He's billing us over now.
So, oh, I see, okay.
But I think you, you know, I think you've got a perfectly reasonable, not perfect, but it's perfectly reasonable.
For non-professionals.
Survey question, yeah, think about, and I could, uh, console on this a little bit, but it's just kind of, use your common sense, think about, you, you want to remind them, and you want to be sure they know how long they take, and longer than two weeks is too long.
Okay.
Uh, that they know how long, after a week or so.
Remind, send a reminder.
Yeah, send a reminder, you know, unless you've got, and, and you, you really, you really would like to get 60 to 70 percent, if you can.
Right.
Of people respond, of households responding, um, then take a look at the block, at what they're responding by blocks, and, oh, oh, and the people who don't have email, you need to go around, yeah, and see them, or, or mail it or something, mail it, I guess.
If we only have 20 homes, I mean.
And then, uh, take a look, and if you've got whole, you know, if you've got sections that are really not responding, you know, think about what to do about that, and you may send them, two reminders, don't tell them why you're doing it, but.
Or maybe ask some neighbor to.
Yeah, something like that is, something like that is fine.
There's, um, we would know, we don't have to send reminders to people who've already sent it in, we will know.
Right.
Who has sent it in.
Yeah, well, that's a question, you, it's okay, it's, it's better, actually, to do that, but if you don't know who sent it in.
Oh.
You, you don't know, you don't know who sent it in.
You would say, that's right.
Then you just say, thank, you start off, you say, thank you very much, if you've responded, blah, blah, blah. If you have not, please remember, this is very important.
Hmm, okay.
Start with the thank you, so.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have two questions that are, um, survey fatigue, so we've talked about doing this as kind of a baseline survey, but we've also talked about maybe doing more detailed surveys for things like streetlight improvements. Um, I don't want to send out a survey every month, every two months, but if we did two in a year, does that, is that too much for people?
Two, two in a year isn't, certainly is not too much. Uh, this one, I, you know, I don't have, been so many channels, I have a sense of how long this is going to take, it's not going to take very long, but, no, there's nothing wrong with two in a year. If you're going to follow up on something, well, I don't know, there isn't really any general principle about that, if it's not excessive, you know, going out two or three times in a year in a community where a lot of people know each other, doesn't strike me, you know, but you do, you need to feedback, you need to, in that case, tell people what they said, and preferably what you're doing about it.
Right. Um, and then my other question was on those more targeted things like lighting, um, you know, there's the, there's a technical piece that, that we have a consultant that comes in, and I think we can provide that information and kind of educate in a way, but then the next que, the questions that most residents have concerns about when it comes to that stuff is aesthetics, so, you know, my guess with what you said about keeping questions short and focused is, you can't do a whole lot of educating in the survey.
Right, right.
But.
Because, yeah.
You need that education to impact the survey.
Why, give me an example.
Well, here's the streetlights.
Yeah, what's?
We have a technical consultant who comes in with his light meters, and he looks at the glare, and he has various measures and everything, and he has said he doesn't like certain aspects of it, and so, but then we want to have.
Is he the only person who doesn't like it?
No, uh, well, he's the only guy with the light meter.
Yeah, but I mean, there's a concern in the community.
So that's, that drives at the question, we, the former council went to Chevy Chase Village and walked around, and you got five different opinions on, they had different lights set up, and he could tell us technical specs of each one, but who liked which light or which lamp? Five different opinions come out of it, so we're.
That's pretty tough, that's pretty tough.
I think we're going to deal with something like that here.
I mean, you may get somebody like me, uh, I'm a stargazer, and I love Reston because there are no lights anywhere in Reston. It's, you walk out of somebody's house, if you've been there for dinner, and it is pitch black unless there's a moon, and I'm surprised they tolerate it, because both, I'm in such a distinct minority of people.
Well, her across the street is an astronomer, and that was her first.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And I, that's not Chevy Chase View.
Last night was the meteor shower.
Right.
Just Chevy Chase View has all down lights, right? Or do they have reflecting?
I don't know, it's not something I've ever even noticed, except that I don't like them.
I didn't want to get too, sidetracked, but how do, you know, the, the issue of educating and then also just getting responses to kind of aesthetic preferences.
Yeah, do you have town meetings?
We do, once a month.
Once a month.
Well, whoever council meeting, and people can attend.
Okay, oh, these meetings, these meetings.
Well, this is a work session.
Oh, this is a work session.
A different.
They can come in and comment, we could do a, a session out under the lights, I mean, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
But how to, how to have a survey actually makes sense in that sort of setting.
Well, you know, if you've got, if you've got a one topic, if you've got a one topic survey, I mean, there's one thing you wanna know about. And, uh, you can, you know, you can send out something that has a half a page of explanatory stuff. Better, better in that case to have a half a page of explanatory stuff, then have a, an opportunity for people to ask questions.
Town meeting.
About it, on a town meeting, and then, uh, have a survey in which you repeat, had the half page and whatever clarification came up in the town meeting. I mean, that would be the one way I would think about doing it.
I'm wondering whether it would, if people have diffuse and diverse views and they're not really well substantiated, how important they are. How much we should pay attention to it.
I, I, all fair questions, I just didn't know a one topics, you know, could you even do it?
On one topic, you could do that. You just, you, you, you want people to have had a chance. This gets back to can people complain if it comes out the way they don't like it? If everybody's had a chance to learn, a fair chance with some redundancy, uh, then not everybody will. But, but, uh, it's not a reasonable complaint. If it comes out that, you know, you want twice as many lights, but you've got people like me that complain, well, okay, I got a chance. I wrote it down, I came to the town meeting, I had my say. Uh, I can either shut up or move out.
Well, and I think also just setting this tone up, this, these are things that factor into decision making, they're not, they're decision makers.
And that's a cost one also. So that's, that's probably one where you wanna put in some costs.
If you wanna take a look at one of our prototype lights.
That one right there?
Yes.
Looks like it's came off a ship.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the lamp holder, and the, the other one is the, or the LED, or LEDs.
I noticed the other one is pointing at me.
Actually, you've been bombarded with microwaves this whole time.
Well, you know the definition of a consultant, right? A consultant is a person who borrows your watch to tell you what time it is, and then runs off with your watch.
Well, you were glow in the dark, so we can find you.
Thank you so much.
And good for you for trying to, to, you know, for going out and trying to do your jobs better by finding out what people want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But don't, don't forget the, asking these, the test questions now.
Right.
And this could be somebody's mother-in-law, or whatever, so.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. It was great information, great fun.
Thanks for coming here.
I'll take, I'll, I'll leave all of this and take my valuable notes.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Okay, check to see if you've got your watches. Okay, where are we?
We've done the office election, we've done the.
What did I do?
Introduction of an ordinance to separate.
Do we have copies of the ordinance?
I believe they're sitting underneath your camera.
These here? This is the people who.
Open the, let's see if they're in the packet, I don't know.
No, these are all applications for elections committee. No, he, she was gonna leave it out, Historical Society.
Ethics Committee, here.
No, that's different. We're looking for, Ron sent the.
Introduction of the ordinance to separate the election ethics.
Yeah, and I, she was gonna print it.
What, you, you sure it's not in this Ethics Committee folder?
No, it's not, it isn't to do with, oh, well, I see what you're saying. Could it be in here? I don't think so. Dear Director for Ethics, dear council members, comparison table.
Yeah. Oh, this is a compilation of materials.
Next council meeting. Here's the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
To amend flexibility to determine.
The number.
April twenty-third, introduced.
That was the one.
Oh, this is the old one, yeah.
That was the one to adjust the number.
Right, so that one's on, that isn't our new one.
I mean, one second, I can cut that.
Well, I can't, cuz she was gonna put that out, I'm, I would just hate, it's not in this packet, is it? Marty.
That's elections, these are the.
These are all.
The applications.
Yeah, I don't think that there's. Uh, maybe this is it. Maybe you're right, here it is.
Okay.
This could be it. Look at the back page.
Oh, yeah, here we are, here we are.
Uh, introduced August thirteenth, yeah. Okay.
And you're, um.
And it's three, yes, we've got it.
Do you have the note from Ron about what you're gonna say?
Um, no.
Um, well, I guess I can, can I introduce the ordinance?
Sure.
So, we're, we're gonna introduce ordinance number zero eight dash one five dash zero one. The ordinance would amend the village code to separate the elections and ethics committee into two separate committees. The council's proposing to do so in order to improve committee functionality. Administering elections and implementing conflict of interest provisions are different tasks, and we, the council, believe that they should be handled by two separate committees. When the ethics provisions were first adopted, duties were assigned to the elections committee. This might have been done out of concern to find volunteers to serve on them. However, we recently experienced with a call for volunteers that there were plenty of people who came forward and were willing to serve. A public hearing will be held on the proposed ordinance at the council's regular meeting on September seventeenth, two thousand fifteen. So is there a motion to introduce ordinance number zero eight one five zero one?
I shall so move to introduce ordinance number.
It's at the top, zero eight dash one five oh one. Introduced by Arthur, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, let's.
By Tiffany.
Right.
Uh, now we can discuss, any discussion?
Yeah, let's go through the, uh, no, yeah, there was one thing, uh, that I thought of walking over here. The election committee.
Yes.
Shall manage the elections.
It's the very last page, just that last staple. Which page are you looking at?
Uh, two and three at the very end, at the very bottom of the stack. This is the actual, this is the actual code. So, um.
So you're looking under chapter four or chapter two?
Uh, chap, for, to begin with, chapter two.
Okay.
We have all the whereas's.
Yeah.
And then we get to chapter two. Um, so, he is saying members of the, the, he's taking out ethics. Members of the election committee shall be voted, qualified to vote, the elections committee shall manage all village elections. That's as currently done. Now, the new clause B, there shall be a village ethics committee, which will be composed of a minimum of three members, appointed by the council, members shall be qualified to vote, shall not be members of the council, shall have the following responsibilities, to provide advisory to persons who are in this council, to make determinations as authorized.
Do we need to distinguish there that they cannot be, they shall not be members of other village council?
It says, they'll not be members of the village council.
Or the elections committee, or?
Uh.
I don't think you have to do that. But I thought, well, we have more, the ethics committee is going to have more, oh, here it is, subject to provision four.
Yes.
Okay, and it is, that's where all of the language for ethics is spelled out. Is spelled out.
Yes, and section six oh two covers the elections.
Right.
So Ron kinda dated section two dash one oh one, small a, is elections.
Okay, now, there's, oh, yeah, here's the thing that, there is no term limit on this. As I, if I, as I read this, on the ethics committee.
The, uh, there isn't, that, at least that we say now, the village elections committee, I, you know, now only runs until the election, and then they're.
But the ethics committee, the, the new language that establishes the election, the ethics committee, there's no term.
Okay, and should we say that, that no member shall serve more than three years?
I don't, I don't, I don't have any thought on that. Uh, but there is a, is there, no, a term of, of, you're appointed for the term of, like, the elections committee is appointed for the term ending at the election.
Right.
It's specified, it ends at the election.
Well, could, should we say that at the, that their term ends at the end of the fiscal year? And shall be reappointed.
A new committee every year, is that something we should be doing?
We have to reappoint an elections committee every year.
Yeah, the election committee, it's specified we have to do every year.
No lifers.
Is this like the Supreme Court?
I, and that might have a chilling effect on volunteering to do this.
Well, but do you know, what, for, just that it, they can only do it for one year?
No, but they could be reappointed.
Right, I, I like the idea that we do change them every, at the end, that every new council.
Has, has the duty to appoint.
Has the ability to reappoint or appoint new.
Right, right.
So that if we don't get ourselves into, you know, where we've got the same people over and over. Now, that happened, I understand, because no one else was doing it.
Yeah, how many people did you ever call, call to get on the election committee?
Right, and, yeah, begged was the word I often use, to find somebody to even agree to serve.
Yeah.
You know, and people complained about Frank and Ted being on it, but honest to God, I mean, I remembered when Noel came on it, you know, I'd made like nine calls by then, uh.
And last year, I, I made a bunch of calls, and the two people who got appointed, well, they're gonna be traveling, and they really didn't realize how much work it was, and they dropped out.
Okay, so.
Okay, so, point, there should be a term.
Well, I, are you agreeable that, uh, shall be composed, but that shall be, um, reappointed? Or shall, uh, will be appointed each fiscal year, or?
So I'm trying to see where in the code, of course, I don't bring it tonight.
For the elections committee?
Yes, where's the.
What it says is that their term ends at the annual meeting. It actually says that, it doesn't even say at the end of the fiscal year, it says, and their term is completed at the annual meeting, or at the conclusion of the annual meeting.
Or the election, one, one somewhere the, like.
Yeah, it was, it's very interesting language of.
Yeah, here's your job, is to oversee the election, then your, your job is done.
Right, and you are gone until a new one is appointed.
So how do you want to insert, um?
Well, can I talk to Ron about that tomorrow?
Yeah.
But I like the idea of reappointing once.
Good, good.
Yeah, we need a phrase here, a term.
And if it, as long as we, can you make a motion that we want to amend this?
Yeah.
To include that there would be a term that would last for each fiscal year?
Right.
Is that what you're moving?
Yeah, something of that, sir.
Okay, and was there a second for that?
A second, huh?
Yeah.
All in favor?
All right.
The reason I'm asking for that is that it might be enough for us to be, still call this the introduction, and we not have to start over again.
Right, exactly.
That's what I'm trying to accomplish. But we haven't voted on the, the full language now, we've amended it. So we need, uh, we already have a motion and a second on this as it stands. So is there, did any more discussion?
Uh, I don't have any, any other points to raise?
Okay, then all in favor, say aye, aye, oppose.
As amended.
Yep, as amended, right. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have the, we're now gonna go into executive session, and do you have that language? Yeah, but Ron sent that also, so we say all the right words.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks to.
That was pretty educational today.
The survey stuff was education.
Yeah.
I was, uh, there were two things that I was concerned about, and I think both of them got addressed. One was the matter of the people who don't have email, and the second one actually, um, kinda got addressed too, and that is how do you ensure, uh, good response?
Right.
And one of the thoughts I had, that kind of springboards off what you had discussed, was we had so many people who were actively involved with the election, thought that maybe not quite block captains, but people in the street could go door to door, talk to their neighbors.
So have you filled in your, your questionnaire?
Well, not so have you, but to encourage them to do so.
Right.
Uh, maybe just a one-time visit at some point during that two-week cycle, um, because it can't be done all in one night.
Right.
And I think we could probably manage to pretty much blanket the, if we get enough people who'd be willing to go door to door. I mean, I'd be willing to, you know, again, cover kind of the area that I'd covered before.
Right.
During the election campaign. The only difference would be I'd be talking to people who weren't necessarily people I was going to talk to about the election.
Right, right.
Talking to everybody.
Right. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have the record on.
Yeah, should, until we do this.
Right.
The council will entertain a motion to enter a closed session under the state government article section three dash three oh five, per N B, per N one, to discuss the appointment of appointees over whom the village council has jurisdiction, namely the candidates who have been nominated for the elections and ethics committee. So I need a motion.
Need somebody to motion to do that.
Would you make a motion? And I need a second.
Okay, Katya Hill.
Katya made a motion to go into closed session.
Arthur Alexander sent.
Second it, all in favor, aye, oppose. Now we turn off the recorder.